Any issues that anybody wants to make? Any second to approving them?
Seconded.
Michelle, thank you. Anybody object? Then it's a unanimous vote to approve. Then we have the agenda. Has to be next. Approval of the agenda as it stands?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Garrett?
Aye, second.
Charlie, thank you. Anybody have anything they want to move up or down? No? Okay. And a vote? Anyone object? So then we have unanimous approval. What is next?
Public comment.
Is it? Oh, and I think we might have a public comment. Yes. You want to say hello and that you're introducing yourself as a new resident around here.
Yeah, I'm new to McHenry County. I'm Crystal Lake. My name is Liz Kaderah. I'm from Evanston and I work my whole life in Chicago. I'm very much enjoying living in McHenry County and all that it has to offer.
And it's only going to get that?
It's only going to get better.
I can hear Mary.
Okay. So then we can move on to new business. Future land use mapping. Brandon?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So first off, we have Dev Lavie, our partner in Austin. He's one of us. Sujan Surtat. Sujan has been one of the GS nerds in working with, really working on this process with you all. Easier to answer so many technical questions than I can. But really, good to be back. It's been a couple of months. So thanks for having us. Before we dive in, I do want to say thank you very much for the last couple of meetings you all had to really put the key recommendations outlined through its basis and give us really detailed feedback. So I do appreciate the time you all spent discussing that. Watched a couple of the meetings and missed one, but I really do appreciate the discussion and we'll be making sure we address your comments and take a suggestion restructuring of a couple of components into consideration. So thank you for your time on that piece.
Thank you.
So tonight, really just want to focus on one piece of the scenario modeling process, and that's what we're calling kind of a business as usual scenario. And so we'll walk through it. I think you all got the memo sent to you yesterday. Not expecting you to have read that in any detail. We'll basically walk you through what the memo says, see if you have any questions, and then you can obviously follow up with any more detailed questions after the night and the next couple of weeks. So a quick reminder of where we're at in the planning process. You know, it's an 18-month process and we're really at the halfway point here. We've delivered the existing conditions analysis. We've provided the key deliverable, kind of where we want to go in that vision, goals, key recommendations that you all have just gone through and vetted. So that's taken us through task four on this process and we're now into the kind of the nitty-gritty where we're taking everything we learned from you all, the key recommendations components, and starting to get into kind of testing different land use policies within a scenario modeling kind of environment. So tonight's really kind of the first part of step five here where we're talking about the future growth scenario modeling process. And ideally, the outcome of step five is a preferred land use plan that kind of dovetails very nicely with all the key recommendations that we've already provided. So preliminary land use framework. Again, recall from the previous deliverable, we provided you with a framework that kind of outlined the various data points, constraints, things we want to take into consideration as we start talking about future land use and recommendations for change here in the county. And that's really kind of provided the starting point for this next step of the process. And so in terms of how we get from point A to point B here, that preliminary land use framework is really the first step. And we're now into the second step here where we're starting to get into what are some different scenarios we want to think about? What are the kind of results from applying different land use policies across the county in terms of how many households we're accommodating, where that growth's happening, how many, you know, demand for different non-residential square footages occurring in the county? Basically, starting to develop metrics that go with the different land use policies. And like I said, the end of this, we'll get to that preferred land use plan in the next couple of months here. So again, as a reminder, here's that preliminary land use framework that outlined a variety of those constraints. So that takes us to kind of the memo we sent to you all yesterday. Really what we've set out to do is quantify the impacts of existing kind of current adopted policy. So we looked at all the land use plans we can get our hands on in the county. So there are several plans that have been adopted. Nineteen have mapped future land use designations attached to them. And so our team worked through it, digitized every single one, brought it into the same map together. So we could say, you know, what is Huntley doing for its growth? And then what are the neighbors to the north doing at the same time? And how does that impact land use here in the county? So that, it sounds simple, but there's a lot of went into it. And I kind of walked through that and then talk about what we saw in terms of the impact coming out of that process. Step one was getting all the land use categories in those different maps to align. So we have 19 different maps, 19 different ways of thinking about land use and slicing and dicing up the landscape here in the county. So step one is really basically creating a crosswalk between the different plans. I want to note that we looked at, really the focus was on the extraterritorial jurisdiction of each community. So that one and a half mile boundary that the state allows municipalities to plan for beyond their current limits. That's the area we care about because that's the area of change, where growth is going to happen here in the county, that impacts unincorporated parts of the county. So we didn't analyze anything that didn't incorporate limits unless, there may have been some unincorporated pockets where a community kind of completely surrounds an area. That was included in this analysis. But anything that didn't incorporate municipal limits was excluded and not really factored into the statusary report here shortly.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Did you make any recommendations that the county board passed resolution related to the extraterritorial development when it conflicts with the residents who live in that one and a half mile radius? Because I have seen nightmares happen from that. And I think the county board is going to have to start stepping up, as well as the commission, and have to step up and be, I hate this word, proactive, you know, to try to stave off this kind of thing. Because what's going to happen is farmers primarily are going to have a big surprise all of a sudden within this one and a half mile radius, and nobody's going to be there to help them. And that is something that is going to have to be assisted with.
Sure.
Okay, Pat? Can I interrupt for just a second? In the zoning process, when somebody wants to do? Oh, there you are. Okay. Full house. When you're doing zoning and you want to, and they want to annex extra property to be able to do something, the municipality has to let everybody know. In fact-
Right. I know that, yeah.
So you've got that part going for you. There are notices that have to go out to all the-
True.
Okay. So if a farmer doesn't need it or know about it, there may be some issues. There are also going to be issues because they have to get permits for roads, they have to get permits for ingress and egress, they have to get permits, they have to get approval from the road districts, they have to get approval from the, let's see, road districts and the schools before they can do anything, anything, any zoning that's going to happen in additional residential. They can't just turn around. If anything, the farmer should be going to the municipalities that have posted this stuff and said, "Well, I'm sorry, I'm out of, I'm in this one and a half, one and a half miles, and what are they going to do to me and how are we going to do it?" So there are things that we can do, but we can't do it here tonight, I think. I think that's true. But we can also end up with recommendations that go to the county board that say exactly what you've just said. But that's not today. That's got to be written down and we take it in our notes. It's on stream that you've mentioned that, and we'll take that, we will take that into consideration when we get down to our recommendations. Everybody's had recommendations here from the beginning, but they go all the way to the end before we understand them in the middle. So let's try to understand what they're doing and then we'll figure out how to get what you want done.
Well, in view of the fact that I've had a couple of different episodes here lately where farmers have had that kind of situation happen-
Let me know.
We will. And it's just that, if you're one or two, three farmers, you're nobody.
Well, let's try to figure out how to help them, but we can, there is something that we can do. And I think if you and I keep track, when there's going to be a meeting that's going to affect the farmers on another piece of land that's going to be annexed to someplace, we can have, I can go to those meetings with the city and say, "This is where we are with the county and we're trying to do this and we're working on that, and we're going to have this done by the end of the year, hopefully. If not, at the beginning of next year." And we can figure out how to start coordinating those efforts.
Okay.
Okay for now?
Yep.
Okay.
And I just want to emphasize, what we're presenting here tonight does not have any recommendations about how we think this plan should put out. This is, the presentation's basically, all the adopting communities that we're talking about here tonight have adopted their own policy. They've made their own recommendations that they're going to assume, presumably implement. That's what we're going to talk about is kind of what's the collective impact of the decisions they've all made, or recognizing that our area of influence, our sphere of influence is within the unincorporated areas and coordination needs to happen within that one and a half mile block. That's kind of that key area of discussion and focus for- So talking about those 19 map plans, we had this crosswalk to kind of help connect the dots and talked about land use within each individual framework within a universal kind of environment. With that said, we also wanted to kind of figure out how to collapse those and make them, kind of talk to one another. So we had to look at the densities that were being proposed in these different areas too. Barrington Hills version of the single-family residential is very different than Woodstock's, for example.
Oh, yes. I know. It depends on how many horses you have.
Right. We couldn't rely on, couldn't rely on titles. We used that as a starting point, but then we looked at what are the areas, like, some plans did specify density, for example. Some plans said, "Hey, when we say this, we mean two to four units per acre." A lot of them don't. So what we had to do is basically look at, all right, in the areas where they have this plan, what's the zoning that's underneath of those? So that was what we used as a proxy for density within the planning environment. And by comparing the proposed densities across all these plans, we were able to basically combine and consolidate land use categories and get to what we viewed as a good middle ground in terms of the number of land use categories we're trying to apply to this map. If we listened to everyone's plan, we'd have like 87 different land use categories, and that would, so we've come up with kind of a universal scheme here. So this is the matrix of everything, and we'll kind of walk through this very briefly. This is not provided in your packet. We can definitely provide this to you. It's a big Excel sheet we can share with the group. But this is the kind of background that went into the land use definitions that are included in the packet we provide.
Well, thank you.
She said, "Thank you."
I said, "Thank you."
So again, this is just focusing, again, on that state residential. You can see here, and maybe you can't for some, but, you know, we've got a column for Elgontwin, and there proposed a state residential is one dwelling unit per acre. We get into Barrington Hills. There, a state residential is 0.2 dwellings per acre, so that's five acre lots. Crystal Lake, again, five acre lots. And so you can see, there's really quite a bit of range between those. And then we get into low density just below that, and that kind of next color of yellow going across, the density ranges ramp up. So we tried to basically look at residential categories across each community, look at the densities they're proposing, and then come up with a more generalized example test classification. So basically, the far left column is our proposed category. Ag is kind of universal, was in almost every single plan. Estate residential, we've kind of grouped a few different categories under that umbrella. Low-density residential, basically two to four units per acre is that next category. So we just walked through kind of each plan and came up with a agreed-upon scheme that we thought made sense. Getting into the other land uses, same thing. The area where we didn't have too much differentiation that we had to worry about was commercial. There was mixed-use commercial generally had pretty similar recommendations. There's a couple of communities that had like regional-scale commercial, but when you actually looked at what they were talking about, it was very similar to regional-scale commercial in Lakemore. It's very similar to regular commercial Crystal Lake. So we've categories. Again, you chuckle, but we have to do this.
I understand.
So at the end of the day, these are the categories we landed on. Again, it's in the map that you all have in your packet, and we have definitions in the packet that I won't walk through tonight, but basically we've assigned a density to the different residential categories, and we have some assumptions built into the definitions for mixed-use, commercial, industrial. So this kind of starts to frame out, what are the categories we want to think about within the plan we'll eventually be recommending with you all as we start to categorize land use in unincorporated McHenry County. So any questions on kind of that crosswalk and that process before we talk about the ag preservation?
Can you go back just one, what I didn't see? Or was there, Lake and the Hills go through there that way?
So we zoomed in on just part of this, so that it's a big matrix, yeah?
No, 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 no. I'm just looking across. What happened to Bull Valley? Do they not have a land use?
No, they don't.
Okay, we have to get that included. I don't see Bull Valley in there.
Yeah, if they do have one, it might not have had a map.
In Richmond. So if anybody else sees a community that they haven't, don't see something, they may not have one, or they have one that hasn't been listed.
Bull Valley is on list in here too.
Yeah, so it might be just not in this matrix, Sujan?
Right.
Yep.
So-
Lake and the Hills is in there. It's just further. You only got to-
We can confirm the list, but yeah, if it's in the list, it was something that was mapped. And it might just not be reflected in this presentation.
Right. And I only ask about that because this might be a very huge board that we could use at the fair or have available for any other presentations that we do, just to show that we have looked into this and see what it is, even though I don't understand what it says. Somebody will. And that we've looked into it and seen what there is and what everybody has, so we know what we're doing from our end.
Sure.
It's just a reference.
You're saying you don't understand. Is there a question you have that might help clarify?
No, 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 no. At this point, I'm just, I'm glad it's all there. If there's any, see, there's Lakemore and Lake and the Hills. If there's something that somebody sees that isn't on there that could be or should be, then we just need to let you know that so that we look at a microscope.
Yeah. Let's make sure we share the Excel when I put this in.
Yeah.
So we'll follow up with this meeting with that more detailed matrix.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. Just wanted to know if it's gross acres, when you say there's one to four, or one to two, whatever it is, is that gross acres or net usable acres?
Gross.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Because otherwise, we wouldn't be able to do the math.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I guess a couple other caveats. There was a couple locations, very nominal locations, where there was actual multiple assignments. So basically, Lake and the Hills and Elgontwin both assigned the land use to a parcel that wasn't, they're basically, it was in between both of them. So that happened along a stretch of Lake and the Hills Road, I think it was, or Elgontwin Road. And then there's another area north of Bull Valley where there's a few parcels of the same. And in those instances, we chose the land use that was more intense.
Okay.
Just to kind of favor density where we could in this analysis.
Okay.
Any other caveats I'm forgetting in terms of decisions we had to make? So that sets up kind of the universe of potential land uses, and we've applied those to a map. Any other questions on that piece before we go on? The other thing we knew was really important to this group as part of this planning process is we need to make sure we're able to document impacts to farm. Previous planning efforts have used soil data to identify prime farmland. We've found that this approach that we're showing you here actually helps us identify actual working farm areas and not just good soil areas that might not be using, being used for farms. And so this analysis that we're showing on this map, we've used crop data from USDA and looked at basically cash crops being produced for five years, five consecutive years or more. And so that really kind of shows where farms are being, where land's being actively used for farms. So just another way of helping us document potential impact on ag areas.
I have a question. Sorry, I just like not familiar with like how farming farmland is shown. What if it's like a different crop? Like if it's like sorghums or something?
Yeah, so we use corn, just as one example here. And we could, I mean, we could look at other cash crops. It's pretty easy to, I mean, you flip the trivia, so it's pretty easy to do. We could run multiple crops and see if there's additional acres that's getting added. We've done this a couple times in other rural counties, and it's usually identical, frankly.
Well, something we have here that probably, I don't know how material it will be, is we have so many horses that we produce a lot of hay on land that I think in other counties is probably corn beans land. And I don't know whether that's a material number of acres, but we have a tremendous number of horses in McHenry County, and that leads to a lot of farmland being used just for hay production and not for cash crops much.
That's a fair point. So I think we've got access to a wide variety of crops within that set. So now that we've got it-
I think the corn and beans are going to be pretty much identical.
Yeah. There's another comment?
I agree with him. That was exactly what, that's exactly what I was going to bring up, was the hay situation. That is a cash crop here. So he's just going to agree with him.
Okay. So yeah, we can definitely fold that in and update our analysis.
Great.
If it's complex.
And it's probably a hard thing to do with something like this, but identifying those properties that are being held in agriculture until they're developed, like where it's very clear that they're really just there as an agricultural parcel until they're incorporated and developed. I mean, I guess it's hard to read those out.
I don't know, yeah. If we had ownership data, we may be able to do something. I don't know if that, yeah, I don't know how we'd approach that at a county scale.
Yeah, because it's not really, in some sense, it's not really land that's going to be staying in agriculture. It's just there because it's a better tax situation for somebody who's going to use that land for something else.
Yeah. I'm open to ideas. I mean, we can map and, and it's not a lot of data, so if you know metadata source that we want to look into, we can look into it, but I don't know if one to address that.
How would you know if somebody's just holding it until they can work for development?
Somebody's are like right next to areas where they are going to be developed and probably will be annexed. It's more near municipalities.
Some of they already have a plat approved on it, they just haven't started building anything, or just hold on to it.
Yeah, and look how long it's taken Wonder Lake to do Stone Creek. But that's been ages, 15 years or more?
More.
More.
Wow.
Then, I mean, it was always done, but it was being done with the remnants of the dredging of Wonder Lake. And you had to let some of that sit for a while, and then 2008 came, and then that went by and nobody was doing anything. So I don't know how you would know, except for the fact that it's planted but not being used for such.
And because they are the areas that tend to be merely recent or near municipal boundaries, you will be addressing those properties as part of this process.
Yeah. Stone Creek is unique. Truly.
Well, we can, we can take another run at the egg preservation, just the egg assets map as part of the next phase here. So the map we're showing here is, so this is on page five of the memo. We're calling it the business as usual, or BAU scenario. So essentially, this is the result of mapping of land use categories we just defined with you all. And again, focuses on unincorporated. Anything incorporated is grayed out, and so we're really just highlighting where new land use change is occurring here. The other caveat being, if it was an area that did not have a plan applied, we applied the 2010, you know, the most recent land use map from the county's plan as the background here. And so what we get with that result is really kind of a, no surprise, an increase in agricultural areas, and we'll talk about the numbers here in a second. You know, we're seeing, obviously, as growth is happening in these unincorporated areas, you're going to lose ag land because that's the primary land use outside of municipal limits. We're seeing an increase in the single-family, especially the state residential in these greenfield locations. Multifamily is kind of the next leader in some areas, and then not much significant change in other land use categories. So looking at the numbers here. So the left-hand side of this chart, and this is on page six, that goes with your bullets on page five. So current condition, again, based on the existing land use inventory that we undertook as part of this process and that we reviewed with you all, there's a little over 200,000 acreage worth of ag land, farmland of various types, not just the crop land use in the county. Based on proposed future land use within adopted municipal plans, we're looking at a loss of a little over 41,000 acres of ag land. So basically, a lot of greenfield development planned within existing on-the-books municipal planning areas. So that's a loss of about 20% of your current stock.
Any time-horror for that?
So these plans run the gamut. Some are being updated now, I mean, others just got adopted. It does kind of run the range. You know, we're actively working with Elgontwin and Huntley right now, for example, with their updating areas. So these are pulling in current plans that we know will be replaced within a year or so. You know, but I mean, most plans are going to have about 10-year horizon.
So when we talk about the loss of acreage, we're actually talking about it more or less on the eastern end where there is already dense populations as opposed to Cabron, Hebron, other areas.
So these are all the parcels that have some kind of change assigned to them.
Okay.
And we can kind of, I think that's where I'm hoping we get land, is maybe focusing on some of those areas.
Right.
But you can see, it's pretty widespread. So we, and we'll focus, if you give me a couple minutes here-
Oh, sure.
We can focus on kind of the main clusters of where that change is in the ranges. So kind of, what is the nature of the development that we're seeing in the proposed, or I guess they recommended, future land use? We're seeing most of it's in the estate residential category, so that less than two-acre assignment. And then the low residential, low-density residential kind of is the next highest category. So the delta, so this far right column is basically the change we're documenting, and so that's the one really to pay attention to. So of that 41,000, a change of ag that's really being repurposed, 24,000, almost 25,000 acres is within that single-family residential category, with the estate residential being the primary land use. So really low-intensity residential development. And this max yield column is basically saying, if we multiply this acreage by these dwelling units per acre, the gross density, we're looking at between 50,000 and 115,000 households. So a ton of growth that could be accommodated within those plans. Obviously, not the most efficient use of land, given that we're talking about, you know, one acre, two acre lots, and very kind of counter to what this group is discussing. The next kind of leading change in, again, recommended land use is this 3,300, 3,400 acres of additional kind of multifamily, so medium density and higher density, so 48 units and eight units per acre. You know, doing the math there, and that's a type of, that we need to fix, but we're looking at, you know, it could be around 30,000 units just in that category, so.
And would you call four to eight sort of a townhouse type of project?
Exactly, yeah.
Eight plus is an apartment type of project?
More or less, yeah. And then in these areas, that's what townhouses come in at. Multifamily, you know, eight to 12 is kind of the range right here. So, you know, a lot of housing could be accommodated just within those areas. Obviously, the differential, I mean, that's the type of development this group's talking about. Hopefully encouraging more of, at least within proximity to the existing municipalities, not in unincorporated areas. And then you can see, some labels will shift, 1,600, 1,700 acres with a commercial development. That's, you know, and again, we're using some rules of thumb here to talk about kind of- about kind of what that means, you know, retail, a good rule of thumb is 10,000 square feet per acre, that'll give you your parking, landscaping, your circulation. And so if you use, do that math, you know, we're looking at 27 million, and I'm sorry, that's being applied to this one, so that's off, it's, it's more like 1.6 billion square feet. So we'll update this. So we'll update this and we send the memo, that's, that's incorrect. This one was correct, it's, it's multiplying this, that you're. And so you can see, I mean, really, the biggest impacts is residential, industrial is another one, adding 37 million square feet of potential industrial based on a floor area ratio of about 0.3. So again, rule of thumb, industrial sites are using about 0.3, 30% of the site for the building itself and that helps a lot of its outdoor storage, parking and circulation landscaping. And then mixed use, adding 500 acres, that's one of the bigger shifts is, is a lot of communities are actually recommending that mixed use development. And so again, they're using that if they are 0.3. And you'll see vacant goes away, all the vacant's been spoken for within the plan because we're already, we're either using the county's plan or municipal municipalities' plan depending on where municipalities have a plan. And then open space, there's a negative difference, I think it's just because of, some groups are actually planning for greenway and open space as part of, as part of expansion and you'll see, or the incorporated part stays the same, municipal limits don't change in the scenario because they are what they are, we're not showing annexation happening, we're just talking about growth in unincorporated areas.
You don't have a gravel mining in the future land use?
We've generalized it here, so earth, earth mining and industrial have been collapsed.
Hard combined, so that includes future gravel mining?
We don't have future, like, most of the plans, I think we looked at didn't have that, they did, we've combined it. I'm trying, do we have any that had future mining areas? I don't think so.
No.
I don't think any municipalities have future mining as a designation.
Okay.
Because of both.
But there's going to be.
But not necessarily, I guess, incorporated limits though.
Yeah.
So that's the, the catch, right? Because we're talking about the municipal plans. So this 1,914 acres is, is this minus this, but the FAR was only calculated against the, the industrial piece, we're not doing FAR for mining because it is what it is. So that's the overall net impact of, of the shifts in development we're looking at here. And so obviously, you know, when we talk to this group, ag preservation's been a priority, development close to municipal limits has been a priority, looking at density and targeted strategic areas to reserve other parts of the county has been a priority. So really this, for us, helps kind of showcase the, kind of if you were to apply these plans as communities have adopted them, it really does kind of conflict with what this group's been discussing. With that said, we do know some of these are being updated, we do know there's kind of a sea change might be a strong word, but there's definitely a shift that's happened within the planning community and within municipal governance to think about land a little differently, so we know, like in discussions with Huntley, for example, the shift towards estates, then that's something they're debating, like, do we need to think about that differently, so.
Is there an opportunity, as you reviewed the municipal plans, to partner? Could you have, did you sense any type of openness to partner with the county?
Uh, I, yeah, I don't, I mean, so we did do a round of engagement with municipal planning staff and so I think we met with staff from nine or 10 communities in total in, in the course of the three workshops we hosted. And I mean, people want efficient growth, people want to see their communities thrive and, and right now, the, again, the, the discussion is really about where are there areas where we can kind of double down on and have more activity, where can we see some more traction, kind of take hold with.
Because I think the land grab is over.
Yeah.
And I, and I, you know, with the municipalities annexing, and I think that we have an opportunity, especially with this commission, to develop some synergy to, to partner with them, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's going to be a part of the next steps as we get into kind of flushing out these land use recommendations, there's another round of engagement with municipalities to say, hey, we met 26 months ago, this is what we've come up with, how does this drive it, where are your heads at? What do you, how do you feel about some of these recommendations that the RPC has come up with? And again, I think overall, there does seem to be alignment with municipalities wanting to concentrate efforts and the county wanting things to stay out of unincorporated areas as much as, as feasible. So that, those two storylines do seem to be recurring. There are, I think, some exceptions to the rule and that's maybe what we talk about next would be like Marengo, I think, for example, has been very aggressive on annexation because of the interstate, the interchange has been added and the infrastructure there. So that's an example where they are very much about looking at that corridor and how they can maximize their economic development potential there. I'm not saying that's good or bad, that's just where their, their policy is.
Right.
So that's an area of discussion. Before we get into that, yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure you're done with the question with, okay, so going back to the land, yes, the future land use versus the existing, and I was just kind of wondering where the, I know it's hard to capture every parcel, but for open space, the future land use for open space is at 24 and I know for sure the Conservation District alone is at So, and I know the Land Conservancy probably has several thousand more on top of that.
But those are all in municipal, they're, they're, that's unincorporated, this is incorporated?
This is only unincorporated acreage.
Only unincorporated acreage.
Yeah.
This wouldn't be counting what's inside some city limits.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so the 2,500 acres is only like outside municipal.
Outside, right, okay, good point. Can I ask, so, in my mind, if I see a land use impact and we have, we start here and you show them here, then are you going to show where the water areas are, where the other issues that we've been talking about, stormwater, where they come in to this to see what we want to do, is there a layering that's going to happen?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where we're headed.
That's where we're heading with it.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're going to be covering particularly the, the underlying water, stormwater and those kinds, the aquifer.
Recharge.
And recharge areas because that's what the unincorporated areas are going to do as much as we can. So if this, this gives us an idea of where those, where people are thinking you're going to have all of that growth, it's not going to be in the, trying to make it not in the unincorporated areas, that's right?
Right, and frankly, even if it were to happen within incorporated areas, water is still a concern, right?
Right, correct.
Yeah.
But they should be as concerned as we are, in fact, they should be more concerned than we are, because there's more use in that area except for watering the crops, which is huge in its own, but.
So that, that is, again, a point we're still.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that my thought process is right and that's where we're heading, in case anybody else was going, huh? I look at all those numbers and suddenly they all, they look like, just, they look like numbers, because once they start looking like somebody else, something else for another reason, then I think that we'll, we'll have probably more questions.
Sure.
And you'll have more data, so we'll be good.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else got anything on this page? Okay, thank you, so far.
So getting back to this map then, so, you know, basically, this map just generalizes all the, any area where there's going to change in, from existing land use to something else for a plan, it's been highlighted in orange and you can see, there's really kind of four main clusters of where we're seeing kind of a, a concentration of change. This area is surrounding Little Valley, north of Crystal Lake, areas on the west side of Huntley, and to the north of Huntley, in the flood area, surrounding Marengo, and then the Spring Grove, Springwood, Johnsburg, Fussler. So here's kind of a zoom in on those areas, yeah.
Question, I don't think we received that map of the changes and that's, I think, super interesting for many of us.
Okay, yeah, we, we can definitely, it should have been the last.
Bring back.
Is this understood?
Oh, it is.
That's those four clusters.
Okay.
No, I mean the change, like the orange.
Yeah, the orange.
Or it just shows.
The one preview. I thought we sent it, but we didn't, we can't.
Yes, please do.
We, we got one, we printed it, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, we can, we can send that along.
And then on that, I, this is probably just me now, I'm trying to think how this works, but like, if you go back one, like, you know, for example, in some of these areas, you can see that there's already streets and, you know, clearly housing and so what's the, like, expected change if you could speak to that level of detail?
Right.
For example, like around, like, Walk Up Road, like, I know there's houses in that area.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, we're going to get into that, there's definitely some massage going to do with this data now that it's been like created, like, there's some areas where we know it's unincorporated subdivisions, nothing's going to change.
Okay.
Basically, it's, you know, the recommendation from the plan to Crystal Lake is being applied to an area that's already been pretty much.
Totally.
Unincorporated, so that's an area I want to highlight because it's kind of flagging an area that's not really an issue.
Okay.
So these are these four areas, kind of just in summary and then we'll, we'll walk through each one. You know, pointers over Marengo, upper left, this is the area northwest of Huntley, like in the hill of Lakewood, Crystal Lake, that's the area we'll talk about, we just mentioned, and then Spring Grove area. So this is the Crystal Lake cluster, we were just talking about, and you can see a lot of the area that they've got the estate residential kind of that, assignment is, is for areas that have already been developed. My brother-in-law actually lives right there, so I know what you're talking about. You know, so it's, it's, this is something we want to make sure we're accounting for, I think it's part of the, the next step is, is really looking at existing land use to make sure we're pulling some of this out of the data. So kind of the estate residential piece really being a big contributor, but we know that's exaggerated, so we want to, we want to look at that. With that said, there are definitely some pockets here where they're, they're still posing lower density to development and then interestingly enough, we do have some pretty significant commercial along the 14th quarter that's in unincorporated parts of the county and so that's probably the biggest shift is seeing some of those areas filled in, but we want to make sure we're going to kind of pull out those areas. I think we'll be using proximity to roadways as a way of kind of flagging some of that and extracting that to get a better, a better assessment of, of that kind of acreage shift. But if we were to take it just at face value, they're adding 6,800, we know it's much smaller. But again, these other land uses are very much, I think, a new assignment, so 336 acres of commercial is a big, a big shift there. Huntley, again, this is an area, we're working with the village right now, we're, we've just kind of started the process, we've gotten through existing conditions and had some floating conversations about kind of past plans and studies. As you can see, in looking at their plan, a lot of this is their northwest gross area, growth area on the other side of 47, a lot of that hatch we're showing here, that's, that's on their plan, but it's, these are areas that are in your, your SARA, your Hacquafal recharge layer for the most part, yeah.
Can I ask a tedious question?
Sure.
Will you say here, can you point on this map too, because I can't see.
I'm sorry, yeah. I'll start using corrections here.
Just like a quick one.
Here, here, thank you, I'm sorry.
And, and one other, as somebody that lives in Huntley, so does that mean, that's not annexed yet, right, but that's what they're projecting? Is that what you're saying, or is?
Uh, yeah, it's unincorporated the most.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, and that's.
It's what, where they're projecting the growth is going to go, right?
Right, it's where, where they, as, because they do want to annex and expand to some degree, this is their whole plan, showing kind of where, where they kind of foresee a growth happening. And so you can see the big yellow blocks on the, on the west side of 47.
Yes.
On the east side, they're pretty much penned in, they have an agreement with Agakwin, with those surrounding communities, they don't have much room for growth other than some pockets.
Right.
Still pretty sizable pockets, but in terms of outward growth, this is their, their area for expansion. But a lot of it is impacted by, like we said, the Hacquafal recharge area is present there, it's a pretty high water table, they know that, so part of the discussion we actually just had when we were doing existing conditions for was like, you know, a lot of this, it's a state residential because of the water, like, you can't do much with that land unless you do some serious engineering. So, you know, I think communities, that's an example, but I think municipalities probably have other areas like that where they've kind of flagged it for a state residential because they're not sure what else it could be, but it's in their jurisdiction, they want to assign something to it. That's, that's kind of the nature of the municipal planning game, is you want to make sure you're, you're assigning a future kind of land use designation, the most of the acres within your, your jurisdiction.
Well, a lot of the problem, in my view, in a lot of these communities, Huntley in particular, is they don't really allow anything smaller than 13,000 to 15,000 foot lots and you could have the same population using a lot less land if you went back to sort of traditional municipal lots of 6,000 or 7,000 feet.
Sure.
And then left a big chunk of open space for them.
And again, I do think that's changing and you're right, I mean, this plan that we're looking at is more than 10 years old, I think there's been a, a bit of a change, so municipal planners that we've spoken to, you know, in general are starting, they're seeing demand for the smaller ones.
Yeah.
So they're, they're trying to respond to that, but in a way that doesn't kind of conflict with what's already just been built next door, so there's a, a active negotiation happening in the, in the developing community. In Huntley, right, it has a right, you probably can't do those smaller lots, but doesn't mean they're not open to the idea through a PD process or something else. So that's definitely a discussion that's being had, I think, across kind of the municipal planning environment, is how do we kind of adapt to what's happening in the market but also recognizing kind of the momentum that's built and, and the environment that some residents have come to expect in their community with the lots that have, so it's, it's a conversation.
They only allowed it in, it's in Sun City, there's lots that small.
Sure, sure.
Our house, the lot is that small, but that's, you know, 55 and 0.
Right. And, and to your point though, a lot of zoning codes don't allow you to build what's in a historic downtown, you have to do something else. So there's, people are coming back to those codes now and saying, oh, we like our traditional neighborhood, we, we should maybe figure out how to allow this as a route.
When you build them, people will buy them.
Fair enough. So that, and that's, and it's something we're seeing, and I think we've mentioned this as part of the existing conditions analysis, national trends from a demographic standpoint, the number of non-family households, you know, families without kids, single person households is getting more and more of the pie right now, so they think, you know, up to 60% in some areas, whereas, you know, I think everyone's used to thinking, oh, everyone needs, you know, a two-car garage and a yard and a dog and four bedrooms. Well, America's not that America anymore, so the demographics are, there's a, there's a mismatch right now between what's housing, where housing's at and where demographics are, and that's starting to change.
Oh, birth rates falling off a cliff.
Well, everybody needs a two-car garage because half of us don't have basements where on slabs and other area garage is your storage.
That's what I was going to say, you need it to keep your stuff, yeah, fair enough.
Oh, trust me, I, I, I see that all the time and it's kind of like, oh my God, we're all hoarders because there's no, no attics and there's no basement, so where do you go with those kind of, and that's how you get an affordable house, is if you don't have to do that kind of stuff. Sorry.
Keep in mind too, that Northwest Huntley is the reason, I think, they're anticipating growth is because there's expectation of a future metro station in Northwest Huntley, has some future date, so I think the village, that's why they were so aggressive in planning for that area of their municipality because they see that as having train service.
Been planning for in the next 10 years for the last 35 years.
Yeah, but there's something that just got passed.
Yes.
For, for one, and that's going to affect this, two.
I just heard about that, and with 90 is right there too.
Right, sorry.
And it wasn't a full interchange, it just became in the last 10 years.
So most of the growth in the counties, you all know, is happening towards the east corner.
Yeah. And Huntley in the 2010s was the only community in the county that had steady home building.
Yeah.
Was huge, but it was 100 or so homes a year when that was more than the rest of the county put together.
Yeah, they made gain gross in the 10 and 20% range the last couple decades, well the counties, as we go and talked about, is plateaued, so.
Now, are we working within your timeframe to get done what you need to get done?
Yes.
Because we're asking a lot of questions.
This is why we're here.
Well, I do, I know that, but we can, we can talk a lot.
No, I wanted to focus on those two other areas and that's the rest of this presentation, so.
Oh, great, okay, I just want to make sure.
We, we wanted to kind of just make sure you guys were able to really get into this piece before we got, I think initially we had maybe scoped to do this along with everything else in one meeting, and we decided we're going to pace things a bit differently now, so I think this is, this is where we're going.
This is probably a very good. This is probably a very good way to go about it, I think. Okay.
So on this map, again, the primary land use is that estate or low-density residential with commercial on 47, not surprised. And then they've got some of the medium-density, kind of the complement, things like they've got the Talmore, let our homes develop there, for example. So again, when we get into land use policy, I think this group's interest is really how can we encourage more to happen closer to that municipal boundary? And how do we reduce that state residential or maybe encourage it to to be.
Ag.
Like as part of the future land use plan or partially ag as part of the future land use plan. And then flipping, going farther west along the 90 corridor, this is Marengo's plan. And so.
That's like a potato, with lots of colors in it.
So here you can see, I mean, in the middle, you've got downtown Marengo, kind of spiraling out from there along the highway corridor and along the rail corridor. And really looking at their medium kind of density, traditional residential is the the yellow kind of going east and west. And then the estate residential, they it's conservation design for them, so I think they're looking at collectively, it's gonna be lower density, but you might have concentration of housing and then preserving these greenway areas that they highlighted. And so when you you flip that and translate it into the categories we've we've assigned, again, you can see the the medium density happening in that orange. And then the lower density is the the yellow. And so they actually, compared to other communities, they're looking at a bit more density per acre compared to other communities and what they're planning for. But it's a large area. So the acreage dedicated to a state residential, 5,600 new acres. 3,000 acres worth of the medium-density and higher-density residential. 300 new acres of commercial, 400, almost eight, you know, almost 500 new acres of industrial. So pretty sizable kind of expansion of the community. Again, they went mile half each direction. They're not constrained by any other communities. So that it helps explain kind of the large acreage we're talking about here. And they've assigned the land use to every single area. To their credit, open space is a big component, right? So they're adding over 1,200 acres worth of kind of greenway space on the north side and then on the southeast side. So it's, I think they are really trying to build these kind of traditional homes that are integrated with green space. But the densities in the state residential to the north and south kind of exacerbates how much land they're accounting for for the population they're gonna create. Also worth noting, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Is there a difference between agriculture and open space on that map? Like, are they both shown and I just can't tell the difference?
I don't think we have egg on this map.
Okay, okay.
We should just, yeah, so there's there's no egg in this.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
They didn't have egg in the land use scheme at all. And it is worth noting that, as we know, interchange has been built now and and they've annexed to the south. So this plan doesn't account for their current municipal limits. You can see on the kind of southwest corner of the map, there's that jagged line. That's their current limits, which is beyond kind of what they had in the previous plan, so.
Well, I think that they're very optimistic in terms of the market for development, with the exception of a note around the the new interchange. I mean, I don't think most of that is gonna get built in the next 20 years. I just don't see the market going out that far. Yeah, Huntley's a completely different story.
Sure. I mean, to that point, though, I mean, the county has approved Aqua Funding for infrastructure to help with that growth, right? So there's that's something we need to look against.
Industrial.
There's huge, yeah, there's huge statement. Ground for water and sewer. 23 million or is it 27 million? It's 20-something.
20.
Yeah, put me in the spot. It's a 25.
I think the growth, I think there's, the growth could happen, but it's all about the numbers. Because if you look at Huntley, you know, 350, 400 per house, and at Marengo, it that's, I think, around the going, right? Three to 400. And that's, people will drive 10 more miles on 90. You know, a young family's gonna drive if they can get a house, you know, for the upper twos or the lower threes. They're gonna do it, a new house.
Nobody can build a house for the upper twos anymore. With free land, it's, you can do it. I mean, if they'll if they'll start permitting 800 square foot houses, that's something else again. But Wisconsin sizes, you can get into the twos, but.
Got to go back to those.
McHenry have sizes, you can.
They would have to be small. Look at Pingree Grove, the growth there, you know, that's not very far away from there. That's one of the only places really moving, I think.
Scott?
I noticed on the previous slide, it was 2004 that land use plan.
Yeah, it's old.
I know when we built the, when we built them the interchange back in 2018, they would require as part of that to develop a new land use plan for interchange area. So if you don't have that, reach out to the city and make sure, I could probably find it too. But it centered more on the interchange location area, so you probably would get more detailed information for what their future plans are.
Okay, thank you, that's good. Yeah, we pulled, I think this is what they currently have listed on their website as their most current plan, but.
Well, part of the argument was that Tollway and the county agreed to step up and pay for the interchange if they agreed that it wasn't to be used to 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 develop new rooftops. They didn't, we didn't want rooftops. The Tollway didn't want rooftops. They wanted industrial development at the interchange location. And Marengo's land use plan and the interchange kind of followed that on all of a sudden.
Thank you, we can we can update this analysis to incorporate that kind of line that you.
Scott, was that for the whole city, the whole corporate limits or just for that interchange?
Well, they.
What they were required to do.
Within their corporate limits, which, you know, even on what you see here, they go further south than what's shown here. You know, the interchange, yeah, you can kind of see here. So even what you're seeing here is not the entirety of the city. Marengo even goes further south off the map. And they had to plan basically for their municipal, municipal limits, what that would be.
Thanks, Scott.
I have a question for you. Are you with the with the industrial development? Okay, one thing is that I remember is that the U.S. Steel Chicago Works was 887 acres, I do believe. You know, which, of course, they tore down and that was the end of that, even though it was thousands and thousands and thousands of jobs. And then here in Woodstock, there was a typewriter factory that was very successful here. And then it had closed down. Was there one that followed it or just the the one?
Boy, I, for typewriters, I think that was the original and it was old.
Yeah.
I mean, it was here forever.
It was, but it hired, there were hundreds of people who worked there. And I just, I just keep thinking how when we talk about these enormous acreages, for what? We planned on doing with that. You know, when we have 887 acres that have thousands and thousands of people working there at Chicag- the Chicago U.S. Steel.
Where is that?
It it's almost Indiana.
On the lake.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
The USS.
They tore it all down.
Never mind, okay.
Gone.
I was thinking, what happened?
They tore it down. It was one of the lot, the huge losses to the state of Illinois. And then you've got, I I think that these little, these littler industrial, if you want to call them, or businesses, factories, might be the way to go rather than looking at all of these, I don't know what they've got in mind, who knows? What they have in mind for all of these huge acreages.
Yeah, but you're talking heavy industrial. You're not talking light industrial. You're talking light, putting in light industrial, heavy industrial.
And what's what's light industrial compared to industrial?
Good example is that this Marengo interchange is most likely to be distribution and transportation stuff where it's truck-based and it's not, they're not smokestacks, it's.
No, but I still call that heavy industrials in view of the fact that our firm, Donald Sel County, has about a million of those. And I would call it heavy, not light. It's a talk about a situation when you have all of those semis. And I mean all, thousands and thousands we're talking about. That's very, very, where does that have an impact? So rather than call it light industrial, I'd say light industrial might be safe, for instance, your, I don't know, computers or something like that or.
To to the point, though, I think when we talk about the the purple areas on this map.
Yeah.
Most of the communities are thinking real estate logistics or kind of more business park uses, not not the large-scale manufacturing. There's many that are planning on that, can't plan for it. It might come to you, but you can't really plan for much of those things, so.
And those are going to be in the city anyway.
So the the acreage here, like the the, you know, 400 acres or so that they're talking about is more like business park and logistics.
Those those always go under, though. There's signs, it's 6,000 square feet per, you know, 6, 60,000 square feet. You know, they always go under. I'm just saying this because it's very, very important that these towns understand. It's a waste. It it really is. How about looking around at some of the malls or the rage of the 80s? Who'd have ever thought those would turn into nothing? Well, I'll tell you what, I've, I have been asked, as a matter of fact, when, as a consulting planner, to look at a couple of these, what a, what a horrible situation some of these things are. So it's just, you have to be really careful. And I really think, though, that those little, these little community factories that are making small things, like, here's a prime example. Guys that are fabricators, for instance, they're fabricators, maybe they're doing some kind of specialized work with cars. Or they've got a, you know, something like that. They're welding. We've got, we've got a handful of those around here in in this county. That's what I think, most small businesses, those should be encouraged and they can be, they can be just about anywhere.
Well, if you can get to Marengo for one of their city council meetings.
Yeah.
And remind them of that kind of of information, that's the best we can do here. If this is, if this is their area.
Yeah.
For us to turn around and say, well, you know, you've got too much area or you've got nothing, that's unless you live there or you go to the meetings and express an open, an open observation or or that you know something. And then you should go.
I'll go stand over there and just.
There you go.
Okay.
But now I'm gonna let Michelle talk first of a minute.
Go, Michelle.
My my only other point was, I feel like that's part of the challenge of this group, is trying to understand what future industry and what our future economy looks like. You know, it's not gonna look the same and that's just the fact of it. And so, yeah, just, I think you made a good point there that, you know, we do have to try to think about what the future of our economy looks like, so.
But I'm I'm serious, from our conversations and the information that that Brandon's been getting from the other areas that you're looking at, we have an opportunity as as representatives of the county to go to the communities and say, man, we're looking at all this stuff. And we we know we have only been able to take care of this, but be very careful or be very observant of what it is you think you want to do because that might not be the way it's gonna go in 20 years or 30 years. You've got variations, you've got new plans, you've got all kinds of stuff that can come up. Because you can only plan so far. And with the weather and the the populations and and of everything coming on, who knows? Who knows what you'll actually be able to do with anything? Carolyn?
Well, we, did EDC, Economic Development Corporation, present this group last year?
No.
I mean, because they, I mean, they actively are working on.
Yes.
Drawing and and you've got your manufacturing pathways program that's trying to get people educated and trained in those areas. It would be interesting to see where, you know, what they're, what they've been doing, you know, where are they looking at, what kinds of industries are they trying to remain in?
Well, once we have all of this under control and we're running smooth, and we're running pretty smooth right now. But once we get that, we can figure out who we want to have make presentations. MCEDC would be one of them at the council commute. No. Committee of the Hull, the Cow. And the last one, the the Soil and Water Conservation District made a very, very nice presentation. And so we've been talking about making sure that we get Spring Duffy to come and talk about the aquifers and what's going on and what they do with stormwater and things like that. Then we've got the lady from the Kane County and their ag programs and what we think we can work with with those. So we're figuring all that stuff out, but we got to see how this works first before we can decide are we going to do more presentations? Are we gonna do more other things? What do we have to do to make sure that we are up to par and we could keep communications open? That's that's the best we can do. And by doing it this way, I think this is working out very fairly well so far. Okay, I'm sorry, go go ahead. Carolyn, everybody, you're all, Michelle, you talked. Okay, you did. Anybody else? Thank you.
And then the last area we wanted to focus on, again, kind of the biggest contributor that shift in land use could be there around Spring Grove. So Spring Grove, it's really hard to see on this map, but they kind of zigzag all throughout the middle of this land use plan area. A lot of unincorporated kind of pockets and growth areas in the south and north, kind of other side of their kind of central border. But again, majority of the land use within that unincorporated area is the estate residential designation, so. And this is an area where there really isn't a lot of development in place right now. It's mostly undeveloped or for ag land. And here you've got 3,800 acres of the residential in that single-family category being added to the mix.
It was their goal to be the locus classicus of sprawl. I mean, seriously.
What did you say?
Put that phrase in the plan.
It is their goal to be the locus classicus of sprawl. I mean, they will not connect residential, even in the central downtown, to the sewer that they have going by it. They want all residential to be well accepted.
Oh, God.
Even when there's a sewer line going right by the house.
It's a conscious decision.
Yes, so this is.
Again, looking at the big contributors, this is one of the biggest areas of that that change occurring.
In terms of population, I think it is the biggest.
So they're adding commercial and mixed-use development in a couple select areas, but for the most part, it's that that estate residential. So we had to be just the summary back here on the end again, but that's really it for our presentation. We wanted to just kind of talk through this process, get your feedback on some of these these kind of trends we're seeing. And we're gonna be kind of using this as a starting point for kind of future land use scenario for this group to react to. They combined this starting point along with the framework we've talked about before that has all those other environmental constraints taken into consideration. One of the areas we're looking at, improving our understanding, our spatial understanding is the the water supply issue. And we have aquifer kind of monitoring data, but we're not quite sure how to make it into a a surface we can kind of intersect land use with.
Okay.
So that's a kind of a weak point that we're working on, having some conversations on. We have different, different experts. And pulling Geosim tech into that discussion because that's their domain as well.
Now, at at some point, I I heard that the aquifer by Marengo at 90 has been contaminated. You heard that?
There's a contamination plume starting to map.
I was just gonna, sorry, that's wrong. Can we go to the Marengo map?
Um, yeah, yeah, it's a little bit easier. There's there's a little industrial strip that demarks where that is located, actually. So if you're at. Oh. Walk over to it now that I'm on my way, momentum up. So right about here is Ritz Road and Railroad Street, and there's a plume. It it's, it was activated in, I think, 1959 was the actual. It was activated in, I think, 1959 was the actual deposit.
Okay.
And they have in their monitoring, in their establishments, how far that plume has spread. It goes into Boone County and they've done 186 or 187 monitoring wells.
Oh, my God.
And they've traced it and they've pretty much triangulated where it's at, but it's not done spreading. It's not done pluming. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so it's not, it's not actively down where they are annexing by towards 90, it's up to the north then?
Correct.
It's through along 20.
Right.
Northwest, yeah, it goes to 20 and it goes to the northwest. So there is a, there is a pair of wells, deep wells that have been located, sorry, areas that have been located for deep wells if they ever needed to. And those are, I believe, underneath 176 and then east of 23 there.
What are the contaminants?
Real long words. I don't know. Yeah, you know what? The IEP has been managing the oversight of the
Is it silents or something else? Because silents tend to move a lot.
I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, we could get very much
Yeah, we
Okay. I just want to make sure that everyone's about something
It's a relaxation stage.
Tweak in my ear.
So they're still in the evaluation stage.
Is that the first time it's ever happened in McHenry County?
Oh, no.
No, no, I don't believe so.
Oh, no.
We can confirm other ones. I don't want to say on the record or anything like that, but I know that there's a couple other ones.
Yeah, well, the Dycast site was a superfund site. And of course, there's the Roman House.
Roman House, that's one I was thinking of that they've
Is defined
Yep.
but is still moving.
Yeah.
Which is the one that was affecting everybody at Peterson, at the Lake, Peterson Park?
Oh, the McCollum Lake Cancer Cluster?
There you go.
Yeah, well, the litigation was against Roman House, but they basically won the litigation because the groundwater doesn't go that way.
Okay.
What I think it is, is Frank Howard in the 30s and 40s buried his
Correct.
His, he was non-ferris metal. He buried his slag upwind, upwater from McCollum Lake. But he's not around anymore, so there was no money to go after there.
Gotcha.
So nobody sued that.
Okay. But there are, there have been other contaminating areas.
Definitely. We just, my question was about the aquifer. Is that the first evidence of aquifer contamination?
No, the Roman House site and the McCollum Lake site are aquifer contaminations.
I thought that was more surface water.
No, no, it's 600 feet down.
Okay.
600?
And by pumping a lot of water and treating it, they are keeping it from getting into the Fox River, but just barely.
Wow. So we need to be very careful with our water supplies and keep that in mind when we're talking about what we're doing, that something unforeseen doesn't happen. We've gotta keep looking.
To kind of getting back to that water supply issue, so this is that constraints map that 90s framework we shared with you several months ago.
Sure.
We basically, the analysis we just did kind of looked at what's proposed to happen within all these unincorporated, extra territorial jurisdictions. So the orange layer here has been mapped essentially with future land use based on municipal plan. And we want to now kind of intersect that with all these other constraints.
Right.
Your sensitive aquifer recharge areas, the prime ag land, you know, a few other components really see, you know, where we want to encourage growth based on these other constraints and how does municipal 90s plants kind of stack up in those areas and where do we want to encourage maybe a shift in that policy? So our next meeting, so over the next more than a half or so, we'll be working to do all that analysis and basically put forth something for you guys to react to. Says, hey, you know, look at a couple of different scenarios here, you know, these outcomes of growing in a certain way in this part of the county, you know, what do you think? Agree, disagree? And that'll give us the input we need to come up with that preferred land use plan that we could have all get.
Does the information and the feedback from those like workshops that we held with the community, is that going into that plan too? You know, where people color on the maps and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, so I mean, that's going to be definitely part of the consideration. That also kind of helped to form this too, because there's some kind of, there's some policies there that's kind of baked in that it's like, we care about aquifer recharge areas, right? So we'll be pulling in, it's not just this conversation, it's not just the previous existing conditions analysis, it's community input, it's kind of taking all that, just like we did with the key recommendations memo that you all just finished going through. That was informed by all sorts of different data points.
I was just thinking for the fair, we may want to highlight like, hey, these are specific things that we took from our community and put it into this future land use plan, so that people see that the work that they did is making a difference.
Yeah, we can, I think, I mean, do we do a map summary for that workshop? But we can, I mean, we can put something together to help with that conversation. So that's the show. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
We gotta have an hour. Well, it's, no, trust me, it's 7:24, so we are well ahead. If you have some more questions about that or anything else that we can get into, that you've been watching what we've been doing, has that been helpful to you to put this stuff together?
Yeah, I mean, I really appreciated the conversations you had ahead about the themes and really making sure that language and the phrasing was what you wanted it to be. I think that, you know, we need to get into some of the restructuring that's been proposed. We haven't found it in much detail yet, but I think based value, it looks like it makes sense. I think, again, we were trying to propose things based on what we had heard from you all, and if you think we missed the mark, we need to reprioritize how that's organized, that's
As long as we get to it, we can pick it apart. Keep me, no, I'm excited. Ellie?
Is there a place, maybe I'm just missing it, where we can find out where all the public meetings are for municipalities that we can show up to? Like, does the county have a link for that? Or do you have to like go into, yeah, that's hard.
No, no.
Marengo
No, 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 no. That's not hard.
Oh, okay.
That's actually fairly easy. They have a yearbook. There is a yearbook and it's online too, and it says who's important, what's going on, but it's broken down by municipality. Then all you have to do is call the municipality and find out what their schedule is. I used to have one, but they may have changed some things.
It's just online. On their website.
It's on every website, so
But there's not, but there's not one combined spot?
It's on a shared calendar. But they're On the county website, you go in under, there's three main headings, county government, department community portal. County government will have a menu that pops down in the local agencies there, and then it'll have every municipality contact information.
Okay, that's
That has their website.
What is it? Okay, thank you.
So that replaces the yearbook.
Yes, okay, thank you.
It replaced the yearbook? There's no hard copy?
Uh-huh, sorry.
No, okay. No, it's not. I relate on that. I'm sorry. Nancy?
Why are we going to be doing it our next meeting?
What are we doing, we're doing it our next meeting? What's our next meeting? July 20th?
If we stick to the, I know, at least Tuesday, Thursday, then it would be July 20th. But I guess from what I was hearing from Brandon, it doesn't sound like you're going to be ready with anything for us.
Yeah, we need it till August.
Okay.
Okay.
So then July 20th, if you want to stick with the monthly meetings, then we can do, I could call Janice about coming down, maybe have Spring Dumping in. We could do that kind of information.
We can just have a meeting with just presentations.
And then the August meeting, we'll have Brandon back with scenarios for you guys to talk about.
Would you think that'll be the 17th of August?
Do you think 10th? Is that the third Thursday?
Yes.
Garrett?
Can you do a question?
We got a question.
No, I mean
We try for the third.
Okay, I'll be gone on the third one, on August.
Okay. You watch it on TV. Come on a counter, Scott.
Oh.
Your annual
Excuse me.
I hate to get my
So really quick question for you. Page seven, areas of change. I really like the contrast here in the last paragraph where it talks about how if we build out all of the projected units, that would be roughly 100,000 units, and that even CMAP is only seeing 62,000 units in their projections, so that's, you know, quite a bit more. Is there a way to maybe evaluate what the planning horizon is for a lot of these different plans? I know it's tons of different sources, but I'm wondering if what CMAP's projecting doesn't overlap with the timeline that some of these folks have in mind. Like Huntley or Marengo, for example, they may have just an open-ended land use plan that says someday it's gonna look like this, but I wonder how that
Yeah, we can, we can, yeah, they should say in the introduction somewhere, what's their planning horizon? We can document that.
Yeah.
CMAP's projections for 2050, most plans will say
That's the 2050 plan?
we're looking at 10 to 20 years, so this would be, CMAP's projection would be on the horizon of what we're looking at, which means they're definitely overshooting, right?
Sure. That might be worth putting in here is that it's CMAP's 2050.
Yeah, we could, what we'll do is, again, we can set a quick revision tomorrow that makes the table corrections, and it'll make sure you guys have those right numbers. Give us another more time, I think we can modify, so like on this page where we list the plans we pulled, we can put in parentheses what year
Sure.
they're targeting.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's good. Randy?
Could you provide layovers on this thing? Layovers?
Layovers.
On the maps? For example, do you have a layover? So, I mean, it's okay to go through, come through this like this, but if you could have clear layovers that have these people in print on it.
Um
You've seen layers, layers.
All the layers.
Yeah, I mean, we could
So like a hard copy?
No, on a clear paper.
Like a transparent
Yeah. My poor kid, I ripped it out. Oh, okay.
We can't do that, but we could give you maybe a series of smaller maps to say, like, so you can see kind of how the different data points
With the megaphone class two.
Wait.
I don't think we could do like plastic transparencies, it's just we don't have that.
I think, I think
Is the final version gonna have a GIS application version where you can see some of these on GIS? And you can stack them on?
Yes, actually, we could, yes. Like, we're not there yet.
I don't know what, we're not having mine for the final version.
That would work better than that, we could do it electronically.
Yeah.
That's all right.
I'm not
We might not be able to, again, tweet it now and next week, but we can figure out a way of sharing.
Final version maybe.
I mean, we're old places, we just have to
Yeah, so we'll resend the memo with, make sure that that Excel gets corrected
Yep.
with that one multiplying error, but we'll get your revised memo tomorrow along with the Excel that shows what plan for inventory and that difference zoning that's
Okay.
Yes.
I think predicated on Metro going to Rockford.
Well, we did the station area, that
Yeah. Yeah. So some of that changes.
I think all this has something to do with it.
It changes. Like the Marengo plant is so ambitious.
I mean, there's, there's plans for five or six metro stations across the county. Prairie Grove is a TOD plan that you guys might have done.
Yep.
Johnsburg has a TOD plan.
So it's stuck as one more.
The Prairie Grove line, that was like that offshoot.
McHenry.
It was like a stub line.
Yeah.
But
They've got that all
Marengo was the line up to Rockford, which got shot down.
Future potential station.
That was Amtrak. That was, and it's Amtrak.
Since we're
It's Amtrak now. That was Amtrak, but I think
Well, 2006, 2007
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was like a future potential
That's how we end the race.
So that, that project, the train service to Marengo and Huntley and out to Rockford, they're choosing an operator right now. So within the next couple of months, we'll, they will announce who the operator will be, whether it be Amtrak or Metro.
Oh.
It's going to look like, it's gonna look like Amtrak service, where it's only gonna run a few times throughout the day, at least initially. There will only be stops in Huntley, at this point, Elgin, Huntley, Belvedere, Rockford. It's not gonna stop in Marengo. That could change depending on who the operator is and the budget behind that. But it could be operated by Amtrak and it could be just a two-train-a-day type operation. If Metro operates, it probably would be able to scale up and might be able to do more of a Metro-like service. It wouldn't be as frequent as what you see on Metro mainline, but it will look more like that depending on who the operator is. There's $900 million of state funding behind it, so it's going to happen in the next three to five years, I would guess, we'll see some trains operating out there.
So that's a short jungle. There we go.
Thank you, Scott. You said five, five, three, the five.
I love the conversation.
Depending on who the operator is, right? So if it's, if it's Metro, it might be a little longer, if it's Amtrak, you might see it more soon.
But let's be considerate of one person talking at a time, just because we've got a couple, somebody's saying something here and I'm watching you and I'm hearing something there and I'm going, oh, wait, or whatever. I just want to make sure that we're doing this one person at a time so we give everybody the same amount of airtime. Airtime. There you go. There you go. Michelle?
I just have a logistics request. Could we get an updated, like, list of all of us and our contact information? I don't think we have one since the new folks joined. Thank you.
Good. Yes. Kind of on that subject, I just want to let everyone know that, you know, we do have a vacant commission position right now, and we have three applicants that are going to be interviewed at the next PED committee.
Okay.
And then we anticipate they'll choose one of them and board to the July County Board meeting.
When is the next PED meeting?
Wednesday at 6:00.
Yeah.
7:00, 6:00?
Yeah.
Okay. Ed?
8:30? Unfortunately.
By the next meeting, we should be back to a full commission again. The three applicants do not all have strong ties to the farming community, so definitely be
Yeah, Ellie's report would be wonderful.
Yes. I'm sorry, what did you say? And Mary, here to Old Business, which we have on the agenda.
Next is Old Business? Okay. Then I'm going to explain that I never did my chairman's comments, which is probably not a bad thing because that would have been at the beginning and then we'd have to stay later, and if we got too late, I wouldn't be able to do it at all, so this is good. So chairman's comments, county fair. I have a sign up sheet, couple hours on every day, that people can please sign up. It's not a whole lot of work. We'll make sure, we're working on it. As you see, everybody's got a flower pack. This one's, and Ellie, it's definitely Perretti-O butterfly garden mix, but it's got the things that we need for pollinators as close as we could get. There weren't a lot of choices.
Where are you looking?
It's, it's in a, it's in a catalog. Oh, no, 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 it's in a catalog because of, we're doing them in bulk, but the important part, it's not the seeds. The seeds are, hey, we're all conserving, so here we're giving you pollinator
It's a good handout. I do really like
It's a good handout, and on the back, it says it's from the 2050 comprehensive plan, And it also has the QR code. So that people want to do the survey, they can do the survey or look up anything on the RPC. That's the main reason for having these, because it's easy. And then we're going to do jars. We haven't figured that out. Use corn or beans or something with it of what's, what things or what goals do we have that are important to the people that come by? And I hope to have, and we still have to work on that, because of the amount of room that we have to work with, what's the size of the boards that we're going to use and what are we going to put on them? So if we have something where we have different colored pegs to match what are the most important things, somebody can put a peg where they live and what are they interested in? So we don't actually have to look at survey stuff. But we can take, take time out at the end of the day to find out somebody who is coming in from outside while they're still interested in what are they interested in. I don't know how much this is going to do, but having the fair, this is a very special year for the fair.
I'm going to pass this on.
It's, I think it's 75 years, isn't it, this year? 75 years for the county fair. So they're going to be putting a whole bunch of effort into this county fair that they may not do otherwise. That's why this year it was important. And so we can enjoy it. We can, you know, I don't know how we're going to get everybody in, but it's not expensive to get in.
Sometimes they'll let you in if you tell them that you're at a booth.
Right.
They'll often let you in for free.
Yes, so that's, that's quite a thing. And we can have some kind of armband or some kind of a name tag or something that says what we're working with so that we can come in and do that, so that it's a fun event that's going to give us some exposure. And then Brandon's welcome to come up and spend a couple hours at the fair with us. Just sign up.
And we're in a great building.
Crystal, you can do that too.
Mary, don't forget to tell me we're in a really good building that's air-conditioned.
Oh, yes, by the way.
The farm bureau group, which includes ice cream, coffee, doughs.
It's air-conditioned. It's air-conditioned. I'm not sure where we are. And I'm going to go look in the next couple of days and see where we are in the scheme of things. But they have the best butter pecan ice cream and they have very good sandwiches.
Is it funnel cake or elephant ears?
I don't know. No, those are in those.
It's a farm bureau.
And it's the farm bureau that heads it, so...
The food that's close will be like pulled pork sandwiches.
Yeah, yeah.
And I will tell you...
Both like grown pork.
Yeah, yeah.
We've been working, Renee and I have been working on this for a year and we almost didn't get it. Somebody had a hoops. It wasn't us. But it was just hoops in the whole scheme of things so that we might not have gotten where we needed, where we wanted to be.
We had to remind them how right we were.
Yes. Yes, we did. So if we ever do this again, or the county does, maybe we can get a 20-foot, you know, get two this way instead of just a 10-foot one. But to start out with, why? We can start out small and personal and we can do something different some other time and somebody else in the county can do something else to focus. I'm sorry?
Other school.
10 by 10.
Are we just doing one per, per...
Oh, you can put...
You can sign up for as many spots as you want.
No, no, I don't mean that. But for each shift, it's only, you're only asking...
We only need one.
You should have more than one person.
Yeah. Certainly. And you're always welcome to walk in and spend some time and say, hey, go get some, get Coke.
Exactly.
Go get those funnel cakes or whatever. I don't know. I don't need those.
Elephant ears is a better choice.
There was a booth last, last year, they had a really good booth with Philly sandwiches. Oh, my God, they were very expensive, but they were huge and they were so good. Doesn't Plum Garden have a...
oldest vendor there.
There you go.
I can't help you this year, Mary. My son is having, I'm having my fourth grandkid, so he asked me to man the booth.
Okay, that's perfect.
That first week.
Yes. Yes, absolutely. So there's, there's a lot of things that we can do. There's a lot of things that we need to review and take into consideration and be serious about, but there are other things that we can do in the meantime. Because I think we have a very good group. I tell you guys this all the time, but this is, it works very well. Everybody gives everybody time. You listen to us old folks, we listen to young folks and say, no, no, this is all we have. No, it's okay. But I think this is working out much, much better than it did last year. I said we've done in five months what we didn't get done in a year last year. So we're almost caught up. Right, Brandon? I think so. We're almost caught up to it. So doing it this way and having the presentations from different people will give us more information to be able to look at what he gives us and be able to make a better, better decisions. Because we don't want to be just haphazard about it. We'll always pound on you about water. That's the thing we've got to do.
And I'll, I'll...
Follow through.
You can count on that, yeah.
I'll follow through. So with that...
Members' comment?
Members' comments? Does anybody else have any comments? Oh, please.
I found two small typos in the text. Do you want those or do you want those to... Who wants them?